Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Today is February 24th. This is a Zoom meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board, which will now come to order. Chris Pratt, do you have any adjustments to the agenda Superintendent Pratt? Okay, I'm going to note that we will begin with item six, which pardon me, no, item five, which are reports. And upon, oh, actually, we're going to start with the minutes.
I have a correction.
Okay, well, good, okay. In fact, we'll do communication as well. Pardon me if I seem unorganized. I've actually spent quite a bit of time prepping for this meeting, even if it doesn't sound like it. So at any rate, I have one adjustment per se, and I simply want to note that item seven A, which is superintendent's contract. I anticipate that action will be likely to follow. So that's, that's a heads up. And let's go ahead and do communication and public comment. Chris, are you aware of any?
Let's see. At this point, no, I don't have anything. If anything comes in, I'll let you know.
With, with, with the board's permission, if we have members of the public who show up at 6:30, which is our normal meeting time, expecting to contribute a comment or a communication, I would like to waive the rule, so to speak, and recognize them for that purpose. That'd be all right with folks? Okay, all right. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes. Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve the minutes?
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, that's you, Jessica, right?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Priscilla Lambert?
Yes, I was in attendance at that meeting as a member of the board. Megan was there as others in attendance.
Okay, are there any other corrections? Okay, hearing none. Are we ready for the question? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as corrected? Let me roll call you. Deb Wright?
Hi.
Thank you. Priscilla Lambert?
Aye.
George Smith?
Aye.
Jessa West Clark?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay, got that. Lynn Morgan?
Aye.
Thank you. Cheryl Charles?
Aye.
Have I missed anyone?
I think Brenda is here, so I probably shouldn't be voting.
Okay, are you here somewhere, Brenda? I don't, do not see you.
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brenda. Thank you. How do you vote, Brenda?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, great. I have to do the sheet.
Did you get a quorum with that list?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. George Terry, George Terry, Jason Terry indicated to me that he would be here, but he might be a little bit late because of his other commitments. So I anticipate that by the time we're done, we will have all nine regular members here. Okay, we've approved the minutes. We've had no communication or public comment, although I'm going to ask Chris to look around again when we approach 6:30. And reports superintendent?
Good evening, everyone. So just, I just want to bring up some of the dates we all coming up. We all know that it's a busy week. We have some dates coming up. We have tonight, not just this meeting, but we have the Bellas Falls Union High School annual meeting. And then we've been going back and forth with the Union Elementary meeting, informational meeting. It looks like that one's going to be on, on Friday at 6 o'clock. You know, Jack and I have been working on that, so I just wanted to update everybody on that. The Rockingham informational meeting will be the night before town meeting. So you can put that in your calendar, and it's also on the school website. Beyond that, I want to get right into, we moved into the central office over the February break. I want to thank everyone in the office and Lynn and everyone involved because it was a huge undertaking to get moved into that office over the break, so it seemed like a seamless transition. And so what I did, what I'd like to do is just, because you guys can't all be there and see what the new space looks like, I just put together a little presentation. I'm going to share my screen so you all guys can see what we're doing. So just give me a minute to call up my, my screen here. Everyone see that?
Can't hear it.
Nice offices, Chris. I would like to know if there are any board members who have any question or comment?
Okay.
How's it feel?
Who's birthday?
Okay.
Whose birthday?
Laura's.
Laura's. Happy birthday, Laura. It's today. Happy birthday.
I didn't realize it until I was walking around doing the filming, so.
No, I, actually, I left around 2:00 o'clock so I could come home at least and have dinner with my son because he goes pedophile this weekend. So I just, I run out, we ate something, and I'm here.
Well, that's, that's great. Cheryl, you had a hand up, and then Lynn?
Oh, just to say that it looks beautiful. Congratulations to everybody. Back to Molly and the committee that did such a good job. It's wonderful to see it, including fresh flowers and art on the wall already. I'm really thrilled for us all. So congratulations to everybody who made it happen.
I think it's a congratulations for everybody, board members, administration, everyone, because it really is a, a nice face to the SU when you have people applying to the, to the SU and meetings, people coming in. As you can see, there was a lot of work done in a short amount of time, the unpacking that took place. But I too want to thank Molly and the, and the committee and just everyone involved because when it happened, it happened quick. And so during a busy time, but we got it done. And so I wanted, just wanted to share with all of you what it currently looks like, and we're still unpacking and, and trying to navigate way around and where things go. But it's, it was a busy last week. So thank you all, board members, administrators, and everybody.
Priscilla?
I have one question. I was wondering that, you know, if the preschool space has been negotiated a new contract for next year? Because that's staying where it was, right?
Yeah, the preschool is going to stay where it was. I'm in the process of going back, speaking with the church in regards to a lease. The lease will be in the same range as it is now, the space. Keeping the preschool there, you know, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I am going to negotiate a one-year lease for where we currently are now. I think there's a lot of unknowns. And so, you know, the church has got some things going on on some of their property. So we'll, we'll negotiate a one-year lease with them. I've already spoken to them in regards to what we're looking for cost-wise. You know, we don't want to be paying more than we currently are. Email from yesterday. I asked him if he can go to the board and create a lease and, and that lease to find the space that the pre-K will be using. So we're looking at the current storage they have downstairs, their current classroom, and then the old conference kitchen area, that they will use that. We're also looking at Triple E going from upstairs, moving them for now into the conference room area right outside the pre-K because they essentially do a lot of close work together. So in general, yeah, Priscilla, we're looking, right now, I think, you know, it's, it only makes sense to do a one-year lease, not knowing where everything's going during these uncertain times. So the building's still in rough shape, but that side of the building we've been able to keep on top of because we have students in it. So there wouldn't really be access in any part of the building beyond the, the conference room and kitchen area. So they, so that's what we have with that.
Do they use the bathrooms downstairs?
The pre, the pre-K has a bathroom where, where in that room there. The bathroom, you know, until June, we can, we still have access to the whole building. But for now, it's, once we're out of there after June, they'll just be using the space over by the pre-K, unless the church does some, you know, rent conventions and upkeep in the other part. But I'm sure the Triple E and the pre-K could use the bathrooms on that first floor as well. Just for adults, not students, though.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on to business manager's report? Hey, thanks for getting it done, everybody. I would like to, if she is ready, hear from birthday person, Flora Pagan, please.
So we've been pretty busy as well. It's for us maybe a little bit more challenging than anybody because we can't stop. The business office never stops. While we were moving, we took turns, you know. Half of us were like trying to help on the move. The other ones were like trying to work from home. You know, we had payroll happen today already, which is amazing that we made it. Going with the whole movement. It will take us maybe a little bit longer to unpack, but it's not a priority. We just, every day, we just work a little bit and organize a little bit more until we get there. Working on different reportings, you know, working with grant submissions and updates. We do have a lot of reportings from the state. We have a new public health benefit reporting that to work on. We have our bond reports that we're due on the second, but we done, we finished those ones already. Biz bid. Like I said, payroll that happened today already. As well, we do have finalizing everything for the audits. We just need audit management letter. That's what we submitted our single audit to the state. So that was finalized as well. So we all been pretty busy, but making it happen. No complaints with the staff. We all worked really well together. I seen it in this move as well, how we all came together as a team and helped everybody. So our work didn't get actually interrupted. So that was really good.
Thank you, Flora. Anything else?
Not at the moment, still working with each of the different districts with informations that they need so you guys could present to us now. Trying to gather information. So that's most likely how we are right now.
The only other addition, the only other addition, the auditors are wrapping up the final audits. We've been sending them out as we get them. So stay tuned for that. I've already asked the auditors to present the final audits to all the, the boards during the, after the reorganization of the boards. That way everyone's starting fresh with information. Spoke to the auditors today also about starting the audit for next year. So the pre-audiing stuff could start as early as next week so we can really get underway for the audit, this next audit in August. So that's where we are right now in regards to audits. So keep an eye on your emails for the final audits as they come out. We'll be sending them out to all of you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Asher.
Thank you. Flora, I had a, I, I looked at the February 15 financial reports that are now, you know, automatically sent to all board members, which is, which is wonderful. And everything, you know, looked good and made sense with the exception of the report, of the numerous reports. I forget if it's five, six, or seven that comes, that comes to me as a board member. But the one for the supervisory union shows a number of additions separated out by each school. So Grafton, Athens show up, Westminster shows up, the others show up, with a number of non-budgeted items. They show up as zero in what was budgeted, and then new expenses. And for each school, they seem to be tied to the Vermont Virtual Learning Academy. The result, when you look at that particular report, is an overspend by several hundred thousand dollars. So I just would like you to take a look at that and come back and explain to us what's going on, that we got a number of new additions. I'm sure there's an explanation, but it's a surprise. These are, these are items that were not previously in the budget. I believe they're tied to the Vermont Virtual Learning Academy. They include things like payroll and other, and benefits, I should say. So when you can, come back to the board, please, with a, with an explanation for those figures and, yeah, what that, what that means for us.
Virtual learning is something that was added and was not budgeted for last year because we didn't have COVID. So this is a COVID, new items and codes that's been added, and that's why you're seeing that there's something that is not budgeted for because it's not, it wasn't budgeted last year. There was no COVID-related expenses. So all of these are new codes that we've been adding, but these are, as well, get covered with grants. So it's not something that we need to worry about, but you are going to see that they're going to be a negative because it was not put into the system. Actually, a lot of these, as they're coming, we are creating codes to add them to the expenses because we didn't even have codes in the system for these expenses. Like, we even created them.
Would the teacher salaries have been shifted out of the regular teacher salaries to the VT D L C for the teachers that are teaching there?
Amy, can I speak to that? Would you mind?
Lynn, if you have an answer, I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So what happened is we had several teachers from the different schools. We not teach at their schools, but again, teach for the virtual learning. So what we did is we pulled them out of, you know, we had a couple of Rockingham teachers, a couple of Union Elementary teachers, some from the, the middle school. So each school donated a teacher, two or three, so that we could cover a number of students that were going. What we did was we put them in the, the district budget to have all the costs go to the, the different districts to be broken up evenly because the students were coming from all the different schools. So we took the district schools, not, not the, the three, you know, not Rock, not the Union, not the, um, the Rockingham, the Union, and, yeah, those two districts. And we put them together so that the money will be coming from everyone equally because the students were coming from around the district, not just one. So it wouldn't make sense to have Suzie Jones being paid by Westminster or the Union District when she's teaching kids from Rockingham and kids from Central and Saxons River and Grafton and Westminster. So what we did was to even it up, to make it into a district cost. We did take one, we did hire one extra teacher to, to supply services to virtual, and that is coming out of the Esser Grant because she was an additional teacher. The teachers that have given their time to teach the virtual are also teaching our kids. So it wouldn't be essentially an excess cost. It's just how we're paying for it. So each, you know, the Rockingham and the Union aren't paying specifically for the teachers who are working for the other, you know, for all the kids. The district will take those costs and balance them out between the two or three districts to cover those costs. And I don't know how clear that was, but we wanted to make sure that it was fair because the students, when we made the, when we made the contract with the virtual learning, we made the contract to be from W N E S U, the supervisory union. The kids are under the supervisory union now. They don't belong to a school. They belong to the supervisory union. Those teachers are teaching for the supervisory union as opposed to the individual schools. So the cost of paying them will come from the supervisory union and go out, be allocated to the schools evenly.
Assess, yes, we would assess them.
Go ahead, Flora.
It gets assessed.
Yes, you're right. It'll be assessed evenly as opposed to letting, you know, one, one district, Rockingham or the Union, pay for everybody or pay for the people that they have. It might not be equal. It might not be even. So we put them all together in the SU, and we'll pay them from the SU, and the SU will allocate evenly and equally.
Okay, thank you, Lynn and Cheryl, I mean Lynn and Flora. Cheryl, I believe that Lynn actually asked you for an assessment of that explanation, so I would like to recognize her response.
Well, it was excellent. It was very clear. I think for everyone who's listening, the most important thing is that all of those additional expenses are covered by the COVID grant monies that we're receiving. And so they are being assessed, I mean, returned to the district. So thank you. It was very clear, and that is consistent with what I saw in the budget reporting, including the kind of equal distribution of costs among the schools. So very clear and much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla?
Okay, is that equally to each of them the same amounts? Or is that based on the students that are attending from the schools? Like, it's always, like, it's done for other situations? And most of it is covered by grant money, I understand, anyway. So maybe there won't be anything. But isn't it more, isn't it fair to do it by the number of students from each district that are there?
When I, when we looked at the list, and we actually went this way to be transparent, clear, and open with everyone. The kids, the students were pretty much equally from each, each district. The, the majority of the middle school kids, and it's hard to track down, but a lot of those kids were from the middle school, which are coming, the seventh and eighth graders, which are coming from both districts. So it really did work out without splitting hairs. The number of kids, it was pretty balanced between the four schools. The, well, the, the four schools, the five schools, if you want to include, you know, Grafton and Saxons and Central and Middle School, and then Westminster. So when we went to pay, and a lot, these salaries, we would have paid them anyway because the kids would have been sitting in classrooms. The grant paid for the extra. We have an extra para that had to replay, an extra substitute, a long-term substitute that is working at Central. And that substitute is being paid by the grant, the Esser Grant. The, we also have a teacher that is working at V T V L Sleet, and she's being paid through Esser Grant funds. So, um, a lot of what, when we looked at the kids, to be honest with you, Priscilla, when we looked at the kids, it didn't, you know, you may have two more kids at Westminster than you do at Central, but the numbers were pretty much the same. And so when we wanted to allocate the cost, we couldn't burden Rockingham. They have more teachers in the program, but they're teaching kids from the Union, if you know what I mean. I've got like three, three or four teachers from the middle school, two teachers from Central, and one teacher from Saxons. So you've got six teachers where the Union gave, I have one, two, three, I probably have three or four from the Union, but they're teaching all of our kids. It just seemed like the right thing to do.
Lynn, I'm going to ask you if we can have a spreadsheet for our next meeting?
Okay.
Okay. I've taken note of the fact that it's 6:30. If there are any additional questions under this topic, let's have them now. But I said I would reopen it for our communication and public comment at 6:30. And Priscilla Lambert is recognized. Go ahead, please, Priscilla.
I was just looking at like the Rockingham reports for the, and the high school reports and the Rockingham town report and realized that in the past, we've always had the W N E S U budget in there, and it's missing. So our, our people out there do not have access to looking at our budget like.
So our, our people out there do not have access to looking at our budget like they have in the past. So that's a concern. I don't know what we can do about it at this point, but it's, it's a big concern.
Thank you, Priscilla. Um, it's now 6:31. Um, I've noticed that we have Don Capincelli and Dempsey Brennan in the room. And I am curious as to whether either of you has any, uh, any offering for us under Communication Public Comment. If you do, um, uh, click off your mute and be recognized. Okay, well, thank you for being here. Appreciate, uh, your interest. Let's move down, unless there are any final items that we've missed under Business Managers Report. Um, let us move down to 6A and you're gonna have to bear with me because, um, we're back to the 173 topic. I'm gonna do a very brief recap on the dynamic of Act 173. Act 173 establishes a waiting formula whereby, um, students receive full-time equivalent waiting based on whether they're a pre-K or an elementary or say a high school. And then there were additional waits which are assigned. Um, if as a, for instance, um, a kid may, uh, have an I E P um, or qualify for free or reduced cost lunch. And, um, typically a kid, um, um, in, uh, the upper elementary and I believe also middle school might be considered a 1.0 F T E. But if they are qualified for free and reduced lunch, they would have an additional 0.25 F T E assigned to them for a total of 1.25. Um, these, these, um, F T E formulas were assigned under Act 173, but it was quickly recognized by, uh, Andy Haas and a number of his, uh, colleagues who are providing for, uh, the administration of special services, that these might not really reflect true cost. And a study was commissioned by the legislature, I believe A O E was also in on it, that sought to take a look to see how accurate these funding, uh, this funding formula really was. And what they found out, I'm just using one egregious example here. That 1.25 F T E, um, a more accurate weighting would be roughly a 3.0. And of course, what that means is that if you're a high-needs district with significant poverty, if you're getting reimbursed for 1.25 and it's costing you a 3.0, uh, you're gonna take it in the neck because the formula is, uh, no longer a reimbursement formula, but rather a block grant formula based on total student population, which takes into, uh, consideration not really, um, the actual cost that a district like ours, actually, I think all of our districts are looking at. Um, and this caused a lot of concern, particularly up north in Burlington, where some of the Burlington, uh, board members rounded up the posse, if you will. And that posse, um, uh, includes Rutland City, to name one. Also includes, uh, both Jack Brier and myself, to name a couple that you might be more familiar with. And here's, here's what is currently happening. Uh, what's currently happening is that the, uh, Coalition, which at this point is still ad hoc, realized that no one among us was gonna babysit the Vermont Legislature and see if they were gonna actually do something about it. And as a result of that, we realized that we really needed boots on the ground in the Capitol Building and we hired the, um, lobbying firm of Leonine, uh, Public Affairs. And I'm gonna give you a qualifier here because this is important. Because the, um, Coalition is organized ad hoc, there is really no mechanism by which that Coalition could hire a lobbyist. And, uh, responding to what I believe was an urgent situation, I personally have become Leonine's client on this. And I have agreed to be their client for the next three months and ensure that those costs that Leonine, um, encourages for their services are paid. And I'm telling you this because, um, one of the key elements here is, um, there was little enthusiasm in the Legislature, we're actually dealing with this. And the excuse given was that we're too taken up with COVID. What's happened since Leonine has become involved on our behalf is all of a sudden, both the Legislature and the media has begun to pay a great deal of attention to this issue. And if you, uh, are not aware of it, anytime you see anything in the media, it's because Leonine has been working behind the scenes to orchestrate these situations, such as the State House Press Conference, such as the testimony which has been given before committees in the Legislature over the last couple of weeks. Uh, that, uh, testimony has involved a number of people who are working directly in the Coalition, uh, stating the case. And all of a sudden, we have the Legislature's attention. And once again, the reason that, that there's a time factor here is that in order for, um, a proposed bill to become law, um, it has to go through what is referred to as crossover. And crossover is where, uh, bills in the Senate, uh, cross into the House for consideration and where bills which are into the House cross into the Senate for consideration. And what we know because of the efforts of our lobbyists in, uh, the State House is that there are two principal bills. And one of them is known as H 54, which I believe is a very comprehensive bill, uh, put forth by Laura Sibilia. And, um, there are some local signers on that, uh, bill as well, such as Carolyn Partridge, who represents much of the Rockingham constituency and a little bit of the, uh, Westminster constituency, as well as also Athens and Grafton. And in the Senate, there is a bill called S 13, which was introduced by Phil Baruth, who is the former Chair of Senate Ed. And here's the way the sausage really gets made. Phil Baruth is a Democrat with some standing, um, in the Ed Committee. Laura Sibilia is an independent, which you can read as a Republican, which unfortunately gives her less standing. And at this point, um, we have, it has been suggested that we urge, um, our, uh, state senators to endorse S 13 and pass it to the House, at which point it is hoped that most of the good points in Laura Sibilia's H 54 bill will become incorporated in it. So this, this is the ongoing work product. And as Andy can tell you, the stakes for us are exceedingly high because, uh, at 173, um, if we actually get down to the point where, uh, we have to deal with the current, uh, legislation, we're gonna take a hit here somewhere between 900,000 and maybe, uh, a million one or a million two. That's a huge burden for our taxpayers. So the work that's getting done right now on our behalf is critically important. And, uh, I'm gonna ask this board, um, to do something. And that is, I'm gonna ask for a motion, um, which is as follows, uh, to formally endorse the goals of the Act 173 Coalition and support its efforts to achieve academic equity through a revised student waiting schedule. Pretty simple stuff. And I'm asking you to do this because when push comes to shove, uh, the Legislature really wants to know, um, how the local constituents are thinking. Okay, um, I've helped the Coalition get a wiggle on with, um, actually doing something about the problem. But, um, this Supervised Reunion Board, as well as our constituent boards, uh, need to do some of the heavy lifting as well. So I'm looking for, um, a motion to formally endorse the goals of the Act 173 Coalition and support its efforts, uh, to achieve academic equity through a revised student waiting schedule. Can I have a motion, please, and we'll open up for discussion? Lynn has a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from Priscilla. Thank you, Priscilla. Okay, floor is open. Discussion. Jack Brier?
Hi, I'm trying to hold my fire on this, but I was involved early and, uh, did a little bit of independent research just to check to see if, uh, the waiting study's conclusions, uh, the waiting study is the study that says that Act 173 in its current form is punitive, uh, on small rural communities and poor rural communities, as well as any urban, uh, community with, uh, high poverty rates. When I looked at the data, uh, if anything, it was mild. Uh, the things that popped out immediately were that, uh, virtually every state that's done this has effectively abandoned it. Uh, it was one of those bright ideas that came out in the nineties from a right-wing think tank. Uh, the reality is that, uh, special ed clusters geographically. We are part of one of those clusters. We're actually one of the bigger clusters. And, uh, and there are, and in the towns where this clusters, uh, the, uh, average cost per student is almost $2,000 greater than it is in wealthier communities. So it really went right down the line, uh, Rutland, us. Uh, there are a number of other places where you could, there was an absolutely straight-line correlation between, uh, their poverty rate and their, uh, and their sped count and their excess cost. Uh, this is a vital issue. It's about a $2,000 difference in most communities. And if a 173 is passed, it's a $3,000 difference per student. And that absolutely blows us over the so-called gold town threshold, which means that'll become quickly a 3,500 to $4,000, uh, difference. And that's not sustainable for, uh, for communities and rural communities such as us. So I certainly urge everyone to enthusiastically support this and, uh, support the, uh, lobbying effort that is part of it. Either going back to your individual boards or, um, personally, if you're able to help.
Jack, I'm gonna ask you, um, if you would give us a very succinct explanation of what the gold town penalty means?
All right, a gold town penalty, we're gonna be talking about that when we get to the Bellas Falls Union High School because guess what? We're over it. Um, what it means is that the state sets up a formula that, um, determined, that really is based on student population and was originally, uh, also based on, uh, poverty rates and a bunch of other things that it no longer really measures. And if you are over that cost per pupil, the state puts a rider on it and assesses you an additional penalty. Um, in the high school's case, as we'll talk about in a few minutes, uh, that pushed us over the $20,000 mark when many of us thought we were passing a budget with a, uh, per student count of around $18,000. It's no joke. Uh, taxpayers felt it and they'll feel it a whole lot more if 173 passes. Either that or we're gonna have to lay off a whole bunch of, of teachers in places where we really only have one teacher teaching a particular subject. There's no way to offset those costs. And, um, the idea that we're going to make efficiencies to get our way out of this is just nuts. We're in a, we're in a special ed cluster, uh, we're in a relatively poor community where this tends to happen. And, um, we, we can't, we, we, we simply can't allow this bill to, um, to, um, to stay in its present form because when it goes into effect, we're in real trouble.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, anyone else here? Uh, Lynn?
I don't understand how the state can even consider doing something like this. It seems totally discriminatory against the people they're pledging to take care of. Am I reading this correctly?
I'm gonna respond to you, Lynn. And the response is this, the Legislature, as, as I said before, and as Jack has pointed out, uh, commissioned a study on what actual waiting formulas should look like. It's their work product. You would think it would be a no-brainer to enact it. It's not because unfortunately, it will create winners and losers. Uh, some of the more wealthy towns, I always like to pick on Stowe with their $1 billion, that's not million, $1 billion grand list would be very much a winner under Act 173 as enacted. And I don't mean to pick on Stowe, but you have to understand that there are towns that would benefit from this waiting formula because essentially, uh, they would end up being subsidized by, uh, entities like Windham Northeast. And that's why this work that we're doing is important. And bluntly, um, I'm urging people to, to, uh, pass the motion because, um, I would very much like to start sharing, uh, our lobbyist Maggie Lynn's work product with you because, uh, she has issued a number of appeals to boards to contact their legislators, uh, about a certain matter occurring, uh, on a certain committee at a certain time. And I think that if we sustain that kind of pressure, that we will likely be able to, um, move, uh, a more favorable waiting formula uh, in this, um, session and not have to wait at least until the end of the biennium or later, which is what the legislators, Legislature's opening position was. We've moved quite a bit here. Now we need to keep going. I hope that's an answer for you, you Lynn. And I have a hand from Cheryl Charles as well. Cheryl?
Uh, thank you. Just a clarification, uh, and Andy, you can help with this. But the Act 173 has been passed. The issue here is how it's implemented and if it will be improved to, for example, implement the recommendations of the waiting study that you're talking about that was, um, requested by the Legislature and does show how inequitable this will be and what the terrible consequences for us and other largely rural communities with a large population of, of students who deserve and need these special, uh, services. So at any rate, I, I just, I think that was a misstatement from Jack that i- if it were passed, it has been passed. The question is how it's implemented, I believe. If I'm wrong, please correct me. But in any case, I strongly support the motion, uh, that's on the floor.
Okay, Andy, Andy has queried and I'm gonna recognize Jack when Andy's done. Go ahead, please, Andy.
I was just gonna say, yes, it has passed. It's been delayed twice. And, um, been delayed twice, I can't remember. I think it's supposed to go into effect in July 22. Is that correct? David, does that sound right or Jack?
I'll defer to Jack. I think that's correct. Jack is a lot more on top of this than I am.
The fiscal year that it's supposed to take place is F Y 23, which would be July 22. Now, do, if I've misstated, let me be clear. The, the bill in its, the, the law, 173 in its present form, there is not much ambiguity about how it's supposed to be enforced. And the consequences that I've described are the consequences. There really isn't a lot of discretion for regulatory agencies. What we're referring to when we talked about implementing the waiting study is additional legislation that will amend the law to bring it into compliance. Because today, the only states that have a law similar to the one that was passed by the, the Progressive Vermont State Legislature is Alabama, Arkansas and Utah. And that's where we're at. Um, and it was intended to be punitive in those states. I can't imagine what the intent was in, in this state, but that's what the effect will be.
Andy, additional comment?
No, I, I, I would agree with Jack on that, on the punitive, um, piece. And, and when I came into Windham Northeast and first saw 173, you could see that that was glaring, that it's, the intent is to get you to try and get control of your special ed costs. Um, but it will penal, it will penalize our district immensely.
We, it isn't even to control special ed costs. In the states that, that tried this experiment, Pennsylvania being most notably, uh, notable, the cost actually skyrocketed because, uh, the, the way the law was written is in fact counterproductive. Uh, it encourages spending in communities that don't need the money and penalizes. It encourages spending in communities that don't need the money and penalizes communities that have no way of reducing their expenses. And in Pennsylvania, in Virginia, in Oregon, in Illinois, costs all went up, and California, they all went up dramatically. So not only does the law not work, all it really does is it's an income transfer from communities that can't afford it to communities that can.
Cheryl Charles, back to you. I think you may have not gotten all the answer to all of the questions that you were asking.
I did, and I want to commend Jack for that additional clarification. I'm, I'm, I'm good now. And again, I strongly support our passing this motion.
Okay. Jessa West Clark and then Deb Wright. Jessa.
Hello. Hello. I just want to add specifically for people in Grafton, they might not realize, our town, our grand list is pretty big. Home sales in Grafton are at least one, if not a couple hundred thousand dollars average price more than say Bellas Falls. But there are significant pockets of poverty in Grafton. We are actually a high needs district and this will affect us more than a lot of people might think. Because I think Grafton's poverty numbers were about comparable with Athens and Bellas Falls. Around 60% of our kids live in poverty and they are more expensive to educate because they have higher needs.
Thank you, Jessa. Deb.
Probably what I have to say is unpopular, will be unpopular. We knew that eventually being a receiving town would have to stop and, and/or even a school district and that the spigot would turn off in, in many different ways. There are lots of other things that may happen to us as well as our educational receipts. However, I do believe that you should make every effort to try and stop this or at least put it off as long as possible. But I also believe that we need to reevaluate our IEP program. I do believe that because we thought the monies would never stop coming, that there may be some students who would not necessarily require an IEP any longer, which actually adds to our costs, not for them per se, but by all the additional staffing that's required. This is a hard place to be. I know that everyone hates everything I'm saying and would like me to shut off right now. But the reality is we must find ways to reduce our budgets. We must find ways to provide service for children and reevaluate every student that's on IEP to see if it's still necessary.
Thank you, Deb. I'm going to remind the board that we are going to need to go into recess before the Union High School Annual Meeting at 7 o'clock. I'm going to restate the motion and I'm going to ask for a vote. The motion is to formally endorse the goals of the Act 173 Coalition and support its efforts to achieve academic equity through a revised student waiting schedule. All right, ready for the vote? How do you vote, Deb? Deb Wright? Okay, welcome back to Deb. Brenda Farcus.
Hi.
Thank you. Priscilla Lambert.
Hi.
George Smith.
Hi.
Jason Terry.
Hi.
Jessa West Clark.
Hi.
Lynn Morgan.
Hi.
Cheryl Charles.
Hi.
Deb, are you with us?
Yeah, I think somebody was holding my mute.
Hey, you're.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, Deb. All right. Motion passes at 6:55 PM. I'm going to, in just a moment, ask for a recess in, in favor of the Union High School Annual Meeting. But I do want to remind members that upon the conclusion of the Union High School Annual Meeting, that we will reconvene for Item 7A, which is the Superintendent's Evaluation and Contract Offer. All right, I'd like a motion to go into recess, please.
One question first, do we just stay on here?
Yeah, that's my question.
Okay, Chris, I think it's a different Zoom is, is the answer.
What I did is because I can only open one Zoom at a time, so everyone can just stay on this. It's going to be instantaneous. I just copied the link for this meeting for the BUHS, the Bellas Falls Union High School Meeting, just so we don't have to log off and log on. I don't have that capability anyways. So if you log off, you can log off, but you're just going to be logging back into the same meeting. Stay on and other people from the high school will be logging on to this meeting here, so.
Thanks. This meeting is in recess. The Supervisory Union Board is reconvening at 8:05 PM on Wednesday, March, pardon me, February 24th. And I am shortly going to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of Superintendent Evaluation and Possible Contract Offer, inviting Lynn Carey to attend. And I will point out that there is the possibility that action will likely follow our executive session. So, Chris, once we have a motion, I would like you to just take us into executive session. All right, a motion, please. Molly has the motion. Cheryl has the second. I'm going to roll call it here.
David.
Yes.
I got anxious. I'm not a voting member right now.
Yeah, and neither am I, David. My three guys, my three folks are here.
Okay. And I, and I, when, when I say Supervisory Union Board, it is the chair's ruling that all board members are members, although each board has three total votes. So I would strongly encourage you to stay in attendance tonight. Okay, so Jessa West Clark. How do you vote? Okay, Lynn Carey. I'm sorry.
David, point of order, did Molly mean that we, someone else has to make the motion?
Who made the motion?
Molly did.
Molly did.
Okay, all right. Well, we're going to have to back up a little bit. I would like to have a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of Superintendent Evaluation, Possible Contract Offer, inviting Lynn Carey to attend.
I think, I saw George stand up.
Okay, George has the motion. And Priscilla, did you have the second? Okay, okay, thank you. All right. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Priscilla.
Yes.
Jason.
He stepped out for emergency purposes, so hopefully he'll be joining us soon.
Okay, all right. Jessa.
Yes.
Lynn Morgan.
Yes.
Cheryl. That's a yes, Cheryl? Okay. Cheryl is a yes. Deb Wright?
Yes.
Brenda.
Yes.